I am Sheila Lyons. I am the president of the Wellfleet Forum and I have a great board that assists in all of these ventures. Today was the DPW set up the room, so I want to thank them. We are here to promote good dialogue and good community and being able to get together and resolve our issues and come to some consensus and still like each other at the end of it all. So, that's our goal, to have a happy, happy community and everyone get along, even if we disagree. And there are going to be always times that we will. So tonight, I will introduce Danny. As I say, others are here. You can go on to our wellfleetforum.org if you want to put your name on our mailing list. That way you can get notices of future forums. There will be Outer Cape Health on May 13th. We'll be hosting Outer Cape Health and they're going to be giving us a total update on all of their facilities, including and particularly the new Wellfleet facility. In June, I believe we're going to be talking to the recycling committee. And then we're going to be doing a forum in July on -- these dates aren't totally set in stone yet, but in July will be coastal resiliency and we're going to do that in conjunction with the non-resident taxpayers. And then in August, I think we're going to have our annual party, which is when we always do, but I think we're going to be joining with the shellfish association and have a real wingding. So, that's going to be so exciting, so you should put your name on our mailing list so you can get all of those notices. And you can also make a donation to the Wellfleet Forum because these do have -- we don't -- we're not out here to make a big profit, but we do have administrative costs and that sort of things, so it's always helpful for any donations we receive. So there's my pitch and I thank you and we're going to start this evening and I want to introduce our town moderator, Dan Silverman, who will begin with our warrant. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Sheila. I don't need a round of applause. Thank you to the forum for putting this on as they do every year. I'm sorry that the room was set up as though this were a board of selectmen -- or select board, excuse me, but so I can't see everybody. I apologize for that. Just a couple of things before we start. If you've noticed me hobbling around, I'd like to put some rumors to rest. I didn't hurt myself skiing. I didn't kick a political opponent too hard. I had to have a bunionectomy, which unfortunately, I still have to wear this boot for another couple of weeks, but I think I'll be able to get through town meeting without too much problem. As Sheila said, the purpose of this pre-town meeting is to go through the warrant and see what questions you might have. And my hope is always that proponents of an article might hear a question that if they're not able to answer tonight, that they can come to town meeting prepared to answer that and to try to make it a little clearer to everyone exactly what the issues are for each of the warrant articles. Some of them are obvious, some of them perhaps a little less. So I'm glad to see several members of the select board are here as well and some other folks who I know are proponents of some of the other articles. Excuse me, just a couple of comments before we work our way through the article. It's a fairly long, long warrant. There are 50, 50-some-odd items that we need to -- I like that a lot better. Thank you very much. That's great. You'll note if you go through this warrant, more than a quarter of the articles are going to require a supermajority, a two-thirds vote, in order to pass. So, under our town bylaws, we've adopted a section of the state law that allows the moderator to declare a vote, a two-thirds vote, if it's obvious, but if there's any question or if any voter, any member of the voting body questions that, we will have to take a standing count in accordance with state law. But some of them, I hope, will be able to get through without a standing count, but I'm going to be looking -- I already have two tellers lined up. If somebody is tall, has good eyesight, and can operate a clicker, I would like to volunteer as a counter. I do need two more tellers. The other thing is, I just, I want to point out that in addition to the warrant being the call to the town meeting, the warrant is also the call to the town election, which takes place a week from this coming Monday. On the 29th, the polls then are open from 12 o'clock to 7 o'clock. There are 13 ballot questions on the warrant. One of them is, the first one, is to ratify the proposed charter changes that were adopted or proposed by the town meeting a year ago, the annual town meeting a year ago. Amending our charter is a two-step process. An amendment has to be approved and proposed by town meeting, which it was last April, and then it has to also be ratified by the voters at a ballot. That's question one. The rest of the questions are either debt exclusions or overrides, and each of those is tied to a specific warrant article. As we go through them tonight and at the town meeting, I'll make mention of which ballot question they're associated with. All of those warrant articles are contingent on passage of the associated ballot question. Some, as I say, are overrides and some are debt exclusions. The difference between the two is a debt exclusion is excluded from the limits of Prop 2.5 just for the life of the debt, just for the time that it takes to pay the debt service on that particular article. An override is a permanent raising of our levy limit, our taxing ability, over and above the levy limit that's imposed by Proposition 2.5. So, slightly different effect. An override has a permanent effect on the tax rate. A debt exclusion has an effect on the tax rate just for the life of the debt, the life of the bonding, whether it's a 20-year or 30-year. I think normally the town borrows for 20-year periods. So with that said, before we -- yeah, we'll start with the budget, which is in Appendix A on your -- oh, yeah, I'm sorry. The one other thing I should mention is there were some warrants that were printed, missing a couple of pages. If anyone has one of those, it should be obvious that the pages are not sequential from the ones that were mailed out. I think there's some extra ones here. If someone is missing those pages, or they're available to anyone that needs them at Town Hall. If you've heard from someone that they've got a faulty warrant, please let them know that they'll be available at the beginning of town meeting in the hallway. They're available at Town Hall ahead of time if you're here tonight and you're missing. Dan, could you tell me what should they be looking for? What would they be missing if they were missing it?
Start with page 16.
All right, so if you don't have a page 16 in your warrant, you've got a faulty warrant. Who knows? 100 years from now, it might be worth a lot of money on eBay. I wouldn't lie about it, though. Article one is the general operating budget. Under our charter and bylaws, that's always taken up first. Town Administrator Dan Hart, do you want to make any general comments on the budget before we start?
No.
No? Okay. Are there any questions on the budget as a whole? When we get to town meeting, as we have in the past, we'll go through the Appendix A, we'll go through the budget, section by section, and at that time, if anyone has any questions, debate, comment, or amendments to offer, we'll do it, we'll do it section by section. And then when we get to the end of the budget, we will take one vote on the budget as amended or not. Any questions on the budget? Okay. Article two are transfers. These are transfers between different line items to make up for shortfalls that have been identified in the budgets that were passed at the beginning of the fiscal year. I think those are fairly straightforward, self-explanatory. Questions or comments on that? Article three is the capital budget. Again, that shows up as Appendix B. And all of -- that's the debt service for all the capital items that we've passed in past years, the ongoing payments on those debts. Questions or comments? Article four, there's a Marina Enterprise budget. Again, under our charter, each of the enterprise budgets has to be acted on individually, separate and apart from the omnibus operating budget and the capital budget. So the Article four is the Marina Enterprise budget and Article five, the Water Enterprise budget. Any questions or comments? Dan Hart? Mr. Hart?
Just to let everybody know, we just got the final version back from Town Council this afternoon. It'll be on our town's website and we will also have handouts at town meeting again, which will have every motion for every article. So you'll be able to have that in your lap and be able to read and follow it and so on. It'll be on the town's website tomorrow afternoon.
Remember that when we act at town meeting, we're acting on motions that are made under the individual articles. And the wording sometimes is a little bit different. A motion can differ somewhat from the article, but it has to be within the scope. It can't propose to do something drastically different than what people have been warned about. The meaning of the word warrant is warning. It comes from the same root as warning. And the idea of the warrant is people are given advance notice of what's likely to be the range of actions that can be taken at town meetings so that if I have to, if somebody proposes something and I make a ruling that it's beyond the scope of the warrant article, that means that it's proposing an action that somebody who got the warrant and read it could not reasonably have anticipated might have taken place. So that's the source of those kinds of discussions and those kind of rulings. In general, most motions will fall fairly within the scope. Every now and then, I have to make a call on that and it is up to the moderator to make that call. So, prior year invoices, sometimes invoices come into the town for one reason or another after the fiscal year has ended. Under state law, in order to pay invoices of a prior year, it requires a four-fifths supermajority vote. Actually, if it's done at a special town meeting, it requires a nine-tenths vote. If it's done at an annual meeting, it requires a four-fifth vote. So that's why you see that extra quantum of vote that's required there. So those three invoices evidently came in after the end of the fiscal year. Any questions on that so far? All right, Articles 7, 8, 9, 10 are all to approve the first year of multi-year collective bargaining agreements. Have all of these been settled now, Mr. Hart? They have. So, at the -- we'll presumably have recommendations from both the FINCOM and the Board of Selectmen. Both of them will be meeting immediately before town meeting, if they haven't already, to vote recommendations on these. Excuse me. So, these contracts have all been settled. The first year of a multi-year contract needs to be approved by a vote of town meeting. So that's what those four articles, we'll be voting on that. Questions on that? Questions or comments? Okay. Article 11, Chapter 90, road repairs the town each year. Essentially, I believe under this -- no, this is not the one where we indemnify. That takes place later on. This is the one where we vote to spend money to repair our roads in anticipation of reimbursement from the state under Chapter 90, which helps us pay for our road repairs. We have to take this to, so that we can get a contract for paving in anticipation of state receipts. Questions on that? All right, and we get to the more interesting ones. Article 12 proposes to borrow money for Wellfleet Harbor dredging. The article says $7,500,000. Is that the figure that's going to be used? Okay, so that figure will be the figure that's proposed. This is the first of the articles that'll be contingent. This will be contingent on passage of question number 12, and that will be a debt exclusion. So, this needs to be, because it's proposing borrowing, this needs to be passed by a two-thirds vote by town meeting and will also then need to be approved by a majority vote at the ballot to approve the debt exclusion, which means, as I said earlier, that the funds necessary for that debt service are exempt from the limits of Prop 2.5 for the life of the debt. Questions or comments on this? Yes, Gary, Mr. Sarkin.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
How long would the debt be for? How many years?
Do we know how long the debt service on that is?
15 years.
15 years. Okay. Janet, Ms. Ryan-Hart from the Select Board. Why don't you use the mic? I think the folks who are recording this would prefer to see you.
So, is it important to -- is this on or is that in?
I'm in the back. There we go. It's important to know that the $7.5 million is not to be borrowed or spent until it's needed. So, in general, we need, the federal government has said they're going to give us $5 million wait and see, but they are supposed to. That's pretty dedicated to us. But that's also an estimate from two years ago. So if the price has gone up, we need to have extra money to finish the job. Then the next stage, the second stage of dredging, is with the state channel. And that is, was estimated to be $10 million and that the state would pay for half of it and we would have to pay for the other half. And again, those are two-year-old estimates and if the cost has changed, we need to have the money available to add to it. And then the last half is $5 million for our own local inner basin. And again, two years old, costs may have gone up, but none of those, so if we get dredging, I'm the only person who thinks that we're going to start dredging this fall, so don't get excited. But if it goes next fall, it won't even be until next fall that we would need this money. Am I right? Okay. And then the same with when we do the state funding. It won't be probably another year that we would need that next $5 million. And then it could be the third year that we need the rest of the $5 million. So, this looks like a big sum, but it really is spread out. We also need to show the state that we are committed to supporting our dredging and supporting the funding for our dredging. So when they see that the town has approved this amount of money, they'll say, okay, we're in two. Any questions on that? Yes. Please, you have to get up to the microphone and identify as a -- oh, new guy. Okay, go ahead. Either of you, there's someone right behind you, raise your hand, too.
Sorry to make you walk over there.
That's okay. It's good for us to walk over to the mic.
I question this because, as I understood it when the first part of the harbor was built, this was supposed to be self-supporting. Now I find that there's no money for dredging. Why isn't there money put aside for dredging? And if there isn't any, I understand that one of the towns on the Cape here has bought their own dredge or is buying their own dredge. And couldn't we partner with them to have the harbor dredged at a lower cost?
So, we have to start with the federal channel and the federal channel has a bigger dredge and it has to have a tugboat that takes it offshore. So that has nothing to do with this. Yes, there should be money in dredging. It's before my time and I'm not going to go there. We've got to be in the present moment and say, okay, this is how we're going to get it done. So, and then there are, if you, in this article, it does say, I don't know, I don't want to look it up, but we can, this money will be used, can be used, for buying our own dredge. The county has promised to buy a dredge that's suitable to us. So you probably know that different areas, different bottom, needs different dredging. So, if we don't, we're looking, so this is the other side of this dredging. The state is, everybody needs dredging. So, Wellfleet's not the only one that doesn't have dredging money and hasn't been maintaining their dredging. So, right now, unless things change, as Dennis isn't here, most dredging equipment is backed up for three years. So yes, we do look, it does say in here, "Or to buy equipment." So we may be buying it, we may be buying it with the county or with other towns. So yes, we are looking at that.
No, this is, this is. Okay. Let me just say here, before we get too far into this and, you know, going forward, the purpose here is not to debate why we should do it, why we should not do it. Again, we're trying to be as informational as possible, so I understand your question.
I didn't think we were debating, Janice. I'm sorry, I'm going to correct that. There's no debate here. We're just, I'm giving information.
No, I just, again, I know it's information, but I don't want to get into, you know, if we're going to get through, what we need to get through tonight.
So the other side of that is, I'm sorry. This is the forum where we do receive the information, so we don't spend a half hour at town meeting explaining, that has already been explained other times between selectmen. Okay, thank you for the admonition. Anybody else have a question? Actually, this lady here had her hand up first.
Cynthia Franklin.
What? I'm looking. Okay. Okay. My bill is, yes. Keep going.
You've got to get close to it, Cynthia.
Right into it.
Okay. It's a quick question. I'm having a little trouble with the math. Is the $7.5 million here going to be the total amount that the town is going to have to spend on dredging? Because I heard you talk about $5 million, half the state, and then another $5 million, and we're already past that. And I'm not understanding the numbers. I'd like you to run through them a little more clearly, please.
So the federal government is dredging their federal channel for $5 million. We do not have to pay for that. However, it's a two-year-old cost, price estimate, and we may have to have some overage on that. We may. We may. We may. Okay? So we don't have to pay for the federal channel. Unless, they said they're giving us $5 million, if it costs $6 million or $550, we might have to bring, we might have to. So we are asking for a lot. $10 million was the state. We're supposed to split that in half, but it all depends upon who's in charge. Okay? So from that $10 million, there should be another $5 million. And then our own local, our inner harbor, is about another $5 million, too. So that's $15 million. Yeah, isn't it? Yeah.
So you're only asking for half.
Yes, isn't that nice of us?
No, no.
Yeah, no. So, we'll see. We'll see. Maybe we'll get more from the state, maybe it'll be less expensive. But yeah. But this is over like a three-year, four-year time. And I just want to also, I'll get down so we don't have to go on about this. If we don't do this, there's not going to be any dredging. So that's the bottom line. That's the bottom line. You want dredging? We've got to do this.
Okay. I just think it's a little disingenuous to not play.
Well, we don't know. We don't know. We don't know at this point. And that's why you're not coming up with any of the money April 22nd, 23rd. Okay, who else? Anybody else have a question? You can't see, yep.
Bob Costa?
Oh, Mr. Costa.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that we've been talking about this dredging project, these dredging projects.
Can you get that a little closer? You're right into it.
Dredging project.
I think you turned it off.
That's why I don't like wireless mics.
Just, yeah, just speak loudly.
Yeah, I can just speak loudly, too. That's enough. That's all right. That'll be true.
We've been talking about these same things for about 40 years. The exact same conversation. Should we buy the dredge? Should we set the money aside before? We've gone nowhere. We've gone absolutely nowhere, zero steps forward, and we're in the same spot. How often do we dredge the harbor?
Never. Does anybody? We did do it 15 years ago, I think.
15 years ago. Okay, so in 15 years, we have not taken one step to get to the points that were just being made. And it looks to me like maybe we're not going to take those steps again. We need to focus.
So we are taking the steps.
Let me finish what I'm saying, please.
That's why we have money from the federal government.
Bob, again, we're trying not to talk about the merits of the article as much as asking questions.
I'm not talking about the merits of the article. I'm talking about the functions of the town in regard to the article.
Well, that's not, that's not really, this is not the forum to do that.
Okay, goodbye.
I really want to try to keep us focused on very specific questions.
So, the first step has been taken. We have gotten money committed to us from the federal government. The second step is getting the town to commit a certain amount of money for the dredging and also possibly buying equipment. So this lady back here had a question? Yep. Oh, hi.
Test. There we go. Yeah, could you tell who you are, please?
Very short question. The money that's committed from the government to us, the federal government, and the government and the money that the state has promised, is, and I have to say, I'm certainly in favor of getting this dredged as soon as we can. Is there a fear or a chance that if we don't vote this, both entities, well, they're going to, the federal's going to do it anyway, the state of Massachusetts might just look at it and say, money's going to go to somebody else who's decided to?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. That's why we have to show them at the town meeting. And this is what was told to us by the Secretary of Housing and Economic Development. He said, "The state is going to look at how much the town supports this." And this is, this is how we're showing that.
Thank you. Janet, anybody else, any other questions on this? Yes. Linda. Linda Schuster.
Linda Schuster. So my question is about the, so the taxes, we're looking at over $400 per year increase in taxes, and this accounts for about half of that. So, will this, is the tax that we're going to be asked to pay for this, is that going to be realized in 2020 or how will this now?
It won't be realized until we spend it, until we need it.
Estimate 2022.
2022. I say this fall.
So I have some time to save up.
But it is. It takes a long time. So the Army Corps of Engineering isn't even going to start doing their work plan until October 1st. So, yeah, so it will not be, it will not be spent until it's needed. It will not be required until it's needed.
So we're not looking at?
We're not. Right. So that actually have, I have a note down on my warrant to ask our town administrator to do a breakdown excluding that, excluding that for this year, taxes.
Thank you, Linda.
Okay, moving on.
Are we going to move, all right.
Yeah, I think we're ready to move on.
Next question, all right. We're going to move on to the next article. Everybody's okay with the dredge? Okay.
All right, so the next article is the proposed purchase of title land that's being offered by the High Delta Trust. Again, this is a, going to be contingent on question 13, which is again, another debt exclusion. There was a forum meeting a week ago, very, very helpful. I hope a lot of you were there and heard a lot of the issues that were raised, both pro and con, on this. For tonight, are there specific questions related to this that somebody can answer, perhaps? Helen.
No, I don't have a question. I just anticipate questions.
Okay.
And I've been asked to be the one to answer them.
Yes, Helen from the Select Board is here to answer. Dale Donovan. I'm going to be less formal and call on people by first name tonight.
That's quite all right. I only have one question, and that is, do we have a written opinion from Town Council regarding both the sale of this property or purchase and whether in fact, the existing shellfish regulations are adequate to prevent the sorts of things that claim to be happening unless this is purchased?
That's two questions. I'm going to answer the last one first.
Two requests?
Yeah.
Two requests, yeah. So, and the shellfish constable is at a shellfish advisory board meeting tonight, so I'll do. To answer the last request question first, Mr. Donovan, our shellfish regulations cannot address any of the issues that are problematic with the town not owning this piece of the bottom in South Wellfleet. That's the first answer. That's the first answer to the second question. And the first question was, what? Sorry.
That wasn't the answer to the question.
No.
The question was, do we have any written opinion from Town Council on these matters?
That was the first question. We have had some advice from Town Council. This is all happening this week on Thursday. The Select Board is going to meet in executive session to discuss this. And there has been a great deal of information collected, questions have been answered, and the town will know about, in other words, no. We haven't, wait. What Town Council has not looked at is a purchase and sale agreement document from the Select Board. Okay? That is going to have to happen. So, that's all I know about that now. Can I make, share some information that's not available in your warrant?
Briefly, please. Yeah.
Okay. First thing is to remind people, this is not an override vote. In other words, it will not permanently increase our debt, our tax rate. The second thing is, unlike many of our other big asks, all of them necessary and, you know, they need to happen, there is no infrastructure repair, maintenance associated with this purchase. In other words, the police station, very expensive, have to repair it, and so on and so forth. The water system. station, very expensive, have to repair it, and so on and so forth. The water system, same thing. That's another thing to remember. And right now, if you go to the town website, there is some very good question and answer information items about this specifically because we're trying to do the heavy lifting to get the information out about it. So, if you go to the town website, it's under probably see more if it isn't on the homepage. You can learn a lot more about this proposed purchase. And one of the most important things is that, right now, the asking price has come down to $2,800,000, and an anonymous donor has rock solid committed, if we pass this at-town meeting and at the election, to donate a million dollars towards it. So, what would hit my tax bill would be 1,800,000.
1.8.
Yeah, 1.8 million, not 2.8 million, which to me is very important. Are there any questions?
David, David Agar.
Danny, Town Moderator, point of order, what would be required, or what would be the procedure at-town meeting to table or suspend this article until a later date, like a fall, special fall town meeting? What would be the steps?
It, there is no, there is no way for Town Meeting to postpone action on our article until a time certain. The only two options are vote on it, yea or nay, or indefinite postponement. There is, one town meeting cannot commit the next town meeting. So, if, if, if this article does become indefinitely postponed, it would have to be brought up at a, at a future town meeting, potentially that the Board of Selectmen, you know, would have to agree to hold. But that, there is no, there is no way to say, it can be, it can be referred back to the Board of Selectmen for further study, for more information. It can be indefinitely postponed, but you can't say, we, we're going to postpone this until a fall town meeting specifically. So, it would either be indefinite postponement, refer back for, for further study, something like that. Can I answer your question?
Yeah, one more question.
Yeah, Linda Schuster.
Thank you very much. So, the information I have on this is just through hearsay and Facebook. So, the, so that's why I'm eager to, to learn more. So, this trust, the How Do You Like Them Apples trust, that, is it true that there are local folks who created this and, and made the purchase to prevent?
Yeah, let me, let me suggest, if, if, for those of, for those of you who are not familiar with the, you know, the background of where this came from, rather than take up a lot of time with this tonight, the forum put together this, this very excellent fact sheet on this. It's, I want to say it's six, six to eight pages, something like that. It's widely available. We can get it to you. It's on the website. I, I think, I think most of the questions that, those kind of questions, Linda, would be answered by that fact sheet. Right now, I'm looking for something that may, may not be on there. Yes, Mr. DeVesto.
They also
Okay.
Self, so that's available to watch, and that pretty much covers the
Yeah, and where, where's that video? That's, is that on the town website?
It's, if you go to the homepage on the town website, it's under Video on Demand, and you go to the date of the meeting. And I just want to report another piece of information about that. The fallout from that meeting, which was a good, wild Wellfleet meeting, the fallout from that meeting has been extraordinarily positive, partly because of the document. And I need to give credit to Nancy Chivetta, and I did most of the work on it with help from Dan Horton, our town accountant, our town assessor, and officials at the Division of Marine Fisheries, and God, you know, other people, Danny Silverman. And it's very well researched, and almost anything you'd want to ask, the answers are there. And stay posted.
I, I think it would be helpful for those who are interested in this to, to, to read that before, before Town Meeting would answer a lot of the questions.
And, you know, I, I think I might even try to get, we'll do more printed copies of that for Town Meeting, of that question and answer.
That would be great.
But it is on the town website. It is also on the Wellfleet Forum website, the list of questions, and there's 35 of them. John Morrissey put all of this together for us, and it, with the help of the Selectmen and Administration. And there is a film. You can watch our video on the town website, or, and it really kind of goes through everybody's what-ifs and hypotheticals, and, and actually other, you know, very interesting information from people in the audience and on the panel.
Yeah, Mr. Lewis, do you have a question?
Okey-dokey. And I'm going to make it easier for you this time.
I would just like to ask, how would this benefit the town, the people in the town, besides just the shell fishermen?
The economic heart of this town is, in part, in great part, based on its single largest industry. Between 10 and 15 percent of the town is directly affected financially by the shellfishing industry. That is our single largest industry. And it spins off into sidebars, like the seasonal, the restaurants, the, you know, something that's part of, if you will, the town brand, although I hate that word. And we have an extraordinary resource. We have the single largest wild harvest habitat in the state by far. I knew that, and I confirmed it recently. And in the same way, I don't have children. I went to school here, grade school. We subsidize the schools. I feel that it's absolutely necessary. And I also, having grown up here, where things were economically very different than they are now, I feel it's important for us to have jobs here available for people who live here. And the extraordinary thing about shellfishing is, it is an environmentally sound industry. In other words, in order to have it flourish, the water protect, has to be not only protect, sorry, they can't pollute, and not only that, they have to make sure the water is cleaner. And that's very hard for a whole bunch of jobs to be provided by an industry that's that, you know, environmentally sound. We're very lucky. It's a huge resource. I don't, I don't know if that answers your questions, but I'm glad that
Again, Mr. Lewis, I think I'd recommend that fact sheet to you. I think, I think some of those questions might, might be answered, it might be answered by that fact sheet.
Two more questions.
If you haven't seen it already. Yes, Ms. Franklin, Cynthia.
Okay. Two questions. One is a procedural, will this article be amended at-town meeting to reflect the new purchase price, or are we going
I would, I would assume, yeah, either amended, I, rather than amended, I think it would be moved with the new purchase price.
With the new purchase price, okay. And just apart from this, has anyone looked at, or was it discussed, and I'm sorry, I had, I couldn't get to that forum, raising the license fees to recapture some of the town, money the town's put in as, as part of doing this?
That's a question that the Select Board has, has
Can I answer? Yes, this comes up cyclically, and it's perfectly reasonable, and it should be considered. But it's something that's considered apart from this purchase. And normally, on a regular cycle, those fees get reviewed. First, they get looked at by the Shellfish Committee, then they get discussed by the fee-setting people, which is the Select Board. So, that's reasonable.
Other questions?
Lee, Lee Clark. So, this article that you have here, it's just for the, right for the Select Board to negotiate?
Correct, correct. As I said, I, I brought this up at the meeting last, last month.
That's what a lot of, the rest of the town needs to know, is just to negotiate to get the ball rolling.
Yes.
Killing it means they could sell it all to somebody else, correct?
Well, I, if, if, if the article is, is defeated, we don't know what will happen. If the article is approved, what it's doing is it's giving the authority to the Board of Selectmen to negotiate on behalf of the town. It is not committing the town to buying this.
Right, right.
It's not committing any specific amount of money. Even, even though there's a dollar figure associated with the, with the motion, it is not committing the town to spend that dollar figure. What it is doing is giving authority to the Board of Selectmen to negotiate for a purchase price, purchase and sales agreement, and whatever conditions they, they deem appropriate on, on behalf of the town. But it's not committing the town to buying it. I mean, it's, if the Selectmen are not satisfied with what's being offered, they don't have to buy the piece of property.
So, to answer your question, and, you know, it's, no way.
Yeah, let, yeah, Helen, go ahead.
So, what's to be hoped for is that we have a purchase and sale agreement with a lot of contingencies in it. Contingencies mean, if this doesn't happen, this doesn't happen, this doesn't happen. We are, right now, beginning to negotiate something that may or may not be ready by Town Meeting. I have my hopes that there will be a loose enough, responsible purchase and sale agreement before Town Meeting. There may not be. But basically, Danny's right, and you're right. However, I want to remind you just generally, just because Town Meeting appropriates money does not mean that it gets spent ever about anything.
Yeah.
Don Rickman taught me that 20 years ago.
All right, thank you. I think we can go on to the next question? We're all satisfied?
Yeah, our, most of the question, again, I would recommend everybody take a look at that, at that fact sheet, so you have a, I think, most of the questions, or many of the questions would be answered. Article 14, 15, 16, and 17 all relate to requests on behalf of the fire department. I'll be recusing, most of you know that I was fire chief for a period of time. So, I'll be recusing. We'll, we'll, we'll have an election for a substitute moderator before we take those articles up. I've asked Mr. Tocanyan if he would be willing to stand for election. He said he would be. If anyone else is interested, that it will be an election conducted by the town clerk before those articles. But for tonight, we'll discuss these. The Article 14 and 15 are both asking for additional personnel, one, one position each. Article 14 would be funded by the ambulance fund, which is a, an ongoing fund that's, that's, the revenues go into that fund from the fees that the town charges for ambulance rides. And the Article 15 would be funded via, via an override. And again, not a debt exclusion. This would be a permanent increase in the levy limit. Chief Hawley, would you like to answer any questions? Are there any questions on this?
Are there any questions? Okay.
Yes, huh, Linda?
Is this, are both Articles 14 and 15 talking about the same FTE?
No.
Two different, two FTEs.
Yes. FTE, for those of you who don't know, a full-time employee.
Full-time employee.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Linda, for that question. As I've discussed this since I've been fire chief, we continue to have a shortage of available personnel. Our call staff is down to nine at this point, nine active people. I'm looking at two leave of absence and potentially two retirements. So, we continue to struggle with being able to meet the needs of the community. So, in an attempt to, to lessen the, the burden on the taxpayer, I met with the town administrator, we receive about $340,000 to $360,000 a year in ambulance receipts. Those are paid for either by Medicare or insurance companies, private insurance companies. So, those, those receipts come in as a result of us taking transports up to Cape Cod Hospital. That is a reoccurring fund. We, we ask the Town Meeting from time to time to replace an ambulance. That comes out of those receipts. We've replaced some radios. That comes out of those receipts. Also, part of the town budget is balanced on those receipts. So, what I've asked to, tried to do is be a little creative, that the current balance is about $640,000. We try to keep about $350,000 as a balance, in case we have to replace an ambulance, something goes bad, something catastrophic. So, I've asked the town administrator, the Board of Selectmen, to fund one of these positions out of ambulance receipts, which is actually done quite commonly in many towns and cities around the Commonwealth that operate the way we do. So, the first question, Article, I don't have my glasses are here, but I'm doing this.
14.
Article 14, that will not impact the tax rate at all. It'll come out of already existing revenues that are reoccurring ambulance receipts. That's for one full-time position. Article 15 is to ask for another full-time position that would come over a provision to an override.
Thank you, Chief. Other questions about these two articles? Yes, Linda?
Thank you. So, are you saying that one of those positions will perpetually be funded through the ambulance fund?
Yes.
Yes, that's, that's the intent.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Pension.
Pension.
How is the pension going to be
The question was, how is the pension going to be covered?
Well, pensions are covered in combination by the employee, the town, and Barnstable County retirement system. So, as part of the dollar amount for the position is considering the town's portion of that employee's pension, as well as firefighters right now that are new hires pay almost 12 percent of their pay into their pension on an annual basis.
So, are they doing a defined contribution?
It is a defined contribution, yes.
Everybody okay?
Okay.
All right.
Onward. Okay, the next article, Article 16, is
Thank you, Chief.
Stay there. Article 16 is to replace the, the current ladder truck. And again, this will be contingent. In this case, it's a debt exclusion, not an override. If, if the town approves this article on the, the ballot question, question three, this would be a borrowing excluded from the, from the levy limit for the, for the duration of the debt service on that. Chief, do you want to just briefly explain?
I'm going to be very brief. The truck that we're replacing is a 1986 Duplex LTI ladder truck. We bought it, used in 2002 out of a department in Florida. It's worked very well for us, but now it's falling apart. We can't find parts for it. We had, we had to spend over $50,000 in the last six years to keep it afloat. To replace this truck brand-new is about $875,000. What I've done, what I've committed to, is to replace this truck with another used aerial. The last one's served us well for in excess of 15 years or more. We have the ability to pick up or to negotiate an agreement on a used aerial truck for about $100,000, and then all of the other things in terms of expenses, bring it up to about $285,000. But that is paint, radios, basically bring it back down to chassis, essentially a rebuild of a, of a 15-year-old truck. So, we're hoping to save the town, or we would save the town, somewhere around between equipping it and versus buying it brand-new in excess of $700,000. So, I ask for your support on that.
Okay. Other questions on that? Yes, I'm sorry, sir.
All right, now, okay, there's one more.
How often do you use that vehicle on an annual basis?
I'm sorry, your name, sir? What's your name?
Chris.
That, that truck responds out, should respond out second due on all fire alarm activations, building fires, second due on motor vehicle crashes, because it also holds a second set of jaws of life. We've had to reduce the responses in that truck in the last couple of years because of its condition. But it's basically the second due truck out on any call within the Highland District or up and down Route 6. So, it's a critical component of the fleet. It's also important to note that in order to keep our insurance rating through the insurance services, services organization, we have to maintain a ladder truck in the town of Wellfleet, or we lose our insurance rating, which was just recently dropped to a three, which was exceptional for a town of this, of this size. So, it has value to the community.
Thank you, Chief Hawley.
Thank you.
Other questions on this purchase?
And before we go on to the next section, is there another fire question?
There is one.
Yeah.
All right. So, we're going to, we're going to finish this up, and then I'm going to ask for a little break for a particular reason. Okay.
Okay.
Next question.
Okay, the next question is to create a, I believe it'd be a revolving fund for paramedic training. Brief explanation on this, Chief.
So, real quickly, there's a, a very, very acute shortage of available paramedics in Cape Cod. 20 years ago, paramedics were a dime a dozen. Right now, there are eight that are going through a training program for about 20 positions that'll be available in the next six to 12 months. We're trying to come up with a creative way to inspire and still help some of our personnel, call people potentially, or a brand-new employee who's only an EMT, to get their paramedic and then be committed to the town. We look at this as a retainment to try to recruit and retain individuals, because it is so, so hard to, to get this accomplished. I don't know if it's going to work, I'll be quite frank with you, but we got to try something different because try something different, because what we're doing is just not working the way it should be anymore. So, that's what that's all about.
All right, thank you. All right, you want to take a break?
Yes, I just want to take a break, because part of our program tonight was that we were going to spend five, at least five minutes with our new board of selectmen. We have an election coming up after town meeting. Two seats are open. Janet Reinhardt is running again for her seat, who is the chair and who you're seeing tonight, and Jerry Houck is retired, and we only have one candidate for that seat, and he is here tonight. So, we're going to give him a few minutes so that you can meet him, since we didn't have a candidate's night debate, and just so he could introduce himself and tell a little bit about himself, other than he has a beautiful baby and a lovely wife.
Hi.
It's Mr. DeVasto.
My name's Michael DeVasto. If anybody hasn't heard, I'm running for selectman, and I hope you'll all support me in my quest to be selectman unopposed. Think I just need one vote, but there might be a, she might be running in as a write-in candidate, so I'm not so sure. But anyways, I just, the reason I'm doing it is because I, you know, I've got this little kid here, and I'm just looking into the future of this town, and I'm seeing, you know, how difficult it is to retain young families, get people to move here, how difficult the housing situation really is, and I'm hoping that I can help increase the, somehow, the stock of year-round housing. Affordable housing, I fully support it, but I think we need to start incentivizing people to offer year-round housing, and I don't know exactly, I don't know exactly what types of incentives, except maybe we could remove the affordable housing accessory dwellings into year-round housing, accessory housing dwellings, so that people with moderate income, who don't necessarily qualify for low-income housing, small business owners that are here that are renting apartments, or, you know, living, you know, paycheck to paycheck, but still make too much to qualify for affordable housing, there really is no stock. I think, I was in high school the last time I saw an ad for a year-round apartment, you know? So, that's one issue that I care deeply about. I'm a shell fisherman, and I just hope that in five or 10 years, we can sort of build the community of young people in this town, so that the people who are retiring and moving on from their professions have someone to fill their shoes, in a way. I mean, who's going to be the next plumber? You know? So, that's all I got to say, and thank you all.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. DeVasto. Okay. The next series of articles, I think, all the way down through Article 23 are various capital improvement projects. For the most part, pieces of equipment for various different departments. My understanding is, part of the reason that you're seeing so many before you this year is that various departments, the DBW particularly, has, over the years, asked for or proposed things in their capital improvement project, and for one reason or another, they've been postponed. Well, I think now, things are starting to come home to roost. I think you'll, if you read the comment by the FINCOM in front of your warrant, I think they have a fairly clear explanation of why we're suddenly facing a number of capital improvement projects. I think, for the most part, these are self-explanatory. All of these are proposed to be funded by debt exclusions, so with the exception of the fuel storage tanks for the marina, Article 23. So, you can go through these one by one if you have. Article 20, I'm sorry, Article 18 proposes to purchase a new street sweeper. Questions or comments on that? Excuse me. Article 19 is for a front-end loader. I believe that's primarily, I think it's, I don't know if it's for the landfill, for use in general by the DBW. Article 20 is a refuse recycling trailer. Again, this would be a debt exclusion. Article 21, for a police cruiser. I see Chief Acet is here. Any comments, questions or comments on that? I think that's fairly straightforward. Article 22 are general building and grounds improvements for the town hall and the library. Again, debt exclusion, and that, I think that concludes those. Once again, all of these are going to be, each of these is going to require a two-thirds vote, because they're proposed to borrow funds for their purposes, and each of them will be contingent upon passage of the associated ballot question, which, all of which are debt exclusions.
Okay, there is one...
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry, a question? Yes, Cynthia Franklin.
Sorry, get all my questions in tonight.
This is the place to do it. This does not preclude you from speaking at town meeting, obviously.
I guess I would just, partly a comment, partly a question, for how long are these debt exclusions? And it would just be useful, I don't know if you can do it in the warrant or somewhere, that that information could be provided on articles like this?
Okay. Town administrator, can you give us an idea of how long these are, the debt exclusions, borrowing?
That's a very good idea, actually. So, it's too late to put it in the warrant, but I will put it in with the list of motions. So, under each motion, you'll be able to see this. For the dredging debt exclusion, we find it, my estimate was that we would finance that for 15 years. For the purchase of the trust land, I would finance that over 20 years. And then for the following four, which is the fire truck, the street sweeper, the front-end loader, and the refuse trailer, I estimated that we would finance those over 10 years, and then the police cruiser is financed over five years. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Yeah, I think it would be helpful to have that information in the motions booklet, that'd be great. I want to say, this was an idea that I think between the town administrator and myself, we came up with last year. It's the first time we've done it, where we actually have the motions available to all the voters, hand it out as a booklet. I think it's a great idea, and give a lot of credit to Dan Hart for coming up with that and agreeing to put that together. Danny?
Question 22, Article 22.
Yes.
Is a debt exclusion also, I believe? And I'm just wondering, those are primarily maintenance costs?
Not necessarily. They're long-term fixes.
Long-term maintenance, but maintenance that we're not doing, and we're out, now we're going out and raising more funds to do what we need to do.
So, when it is a, when you're replacing the flooring in town hall, I don't consider that as a maintenance project. That's a long-term project. The projects at the library also, just by what the definition of our capital projects are, are something that has a life of over five years and a value, I think it's over $2,500. I think maybe we need to relook at that, so that we don't have certain things that should be just maintenance projects coming up as capital projects. So, I think we do need to relook at that.
Thank you. Other questions on any of these four or five articles? Six, I think, actually. No?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, one question in the back there? Yes, Steve Gazzano.
Sorry, question I had...
Yeah, could you wait for the mic, please, Steve?
It would be nice to see the selectmen or the town administrator put all the, oh, golly, the...
Take your time.
All the equipment, all the motions in a priority order, so if ambulance is more important than a street sweeper, so if we all had them in priority order, so that would give us a better idea what's most important to the town.
Okay, that's, perhaps, I think each department head is going to tell you that theirs is the most important. I know I would if I were still fire chief, but I don't know if that's something that the selectmen want to entertain. I think it might be, might be a little late in the game for that, but it's certainly something that could be considered, perhaps. Anyway, you have that question, so it's up to the select board and the town administrator if they want to try to do something with that. Okay, other questions? Yes, Mr. Kusunas, John.
Yes, my question is, have the residual values of the machines and equipment that are being replaced have been taken into consideration for the final costs for the new equipment or the equipment that will be replacing the old equipment? And has the finance committee and the other committees involved looked at ways to cut costs in other areas, so our taxes aren't raised substantially?
That's two questions. In terms of the residual value, are you talking about trade-in and so forth? I assume that when, I know when some of these pieces of equipment are replaced, there is some trade-in value. Dan?
With many of them, we don't know the trade-in value when we're bringing it forward, so we don't know until we actually trade it in what they're going to give us. So, when we're asking you, say, for example, of $235,000 for a street sweeper, that's probably going to be reduced by whatever we can get out of the existing street sweeper, but we don't know that amount yet.
The second question, are there any members of the FINCOM here? No? Okay. I mean, I know from, I know the FINCOM does look very carefully at ways of both reducing the taxes and limiting the raises, as well as potential other revenue sources. That's, I can't speak for them, but I know, based on the statement that they made in the beginning of the warrant, I think that's certainly something that they take a hard look at, yes.
Justine DeCrosen, select board. I just think it's useful to put into context with a bit of a heavy lift we have this year with a bunch of critical capital expenditures, as well as dredging and Hilda, that everybody who is a year-round resident, a primary resident of Wellfleet, got a significant tax reduction when we voted the split residential tax. And that was one of my reasons for advocating that, was we do have a low tax rate relative to the rest of the state, and it should, the split residential has got my vote, because it gives us a bit of wiggle room when we have to have a heavy-lift year like we do.
Thank you, Justina.
Thank you.
Other questions about these various capital projects?
Okay.
Okay. The Article 24 is to fund the other post-employment benefits. This is part of the commitment that the town has to its both current and past employees. It's essentially an unfunded liability or an underfunded liability. The town is working very hard to try to catch up on, I know something that John Morrissey has been interested in for a number of years. Question, John?
Yes, thank you, Danny. Danny, I'm John Morrissey, and we've been discussing this other post-employment benefits for a number of years, and town meeting has, for the past six years, has overwhelmingly supported the plan that the selectmen and the finance committee put in place. Other post-employment benefits are things like healthcare for people who retire, and it's an enormous expense that has never been funded in any town in the country practically until the past seven or eight years ago, and Wellfleet got on board, and basically we started to build up this fund, so that the hole that we were digging rather rapidly every single year, well, now we're digging it a little bit slower. And the written policy that the selectmen have in place indicates that we're supposed to increase the amount that we put into this fund each year. This way, it wouldn't be such a big shock in one year where we put in $1 million, and we'd gradually work our way up to it. And last year, we put in $250,000, and this year, unless this is a typo, we're only putting in $200,000. And our other post-employment liability is going to increase, because people live longer, and it's also based on the number of full-time employees. We've recently hired a couple of firefighters, I'm sure we need them, we're going to hire a couple more, so our other post-employment liability is going to continue to grow. So, I question the wisdom on the decrease here. I'm very much in favor of all the government services that we're willing to pay for. I'm not in favor of government services that we're not willing to pay for, that we want our children and grandchildren to pay. So, I'd like an explanation of it from the selectmen and the town administrator.
Mr. Hart.
So, every other year, we participate in a study through Barnstable County. It's done by Siegel Associates, where they do an actual, actuarial valuation of what our liability is for other post-employment benefits. So, we had, in the past, we had always estimated what our liability was, or what we needed to pay to get ourselves so that the liability is fully covered. So, this past year, what I did is I asked Siegel Company to actually come up with a funding schedule for us of how we could pay off our liability, or fully fund our liability. So, the number that they gave me was $166,000 per year, would fund it over 30 years, and so I decided to go a little bit higher than that, so that we weren't looking at 30 years. And I will tell you that if there weren't the number of things that were on the ballot this year, I probably would have tried to fund it higher, but I used the Siegel Associates to say, okay, if we can get this funded within 25 years, I think we're doing pretty good there, and that's how the decision was made, to put this at $200,000.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. So, as it stands now, if we continue on this schedule, or even a little more, if we're able to in future years, we'd essentially fund that liability fully within 25 to 30 years. Yeah, thank you. John?
Is that study available on the town website? I'm sure a lot of us would like to read it.
You know, I can put it up there.
Thank you.
Thanks. Other questions about the OPEB, other post-employment benefits funding? The next article, two articles are transfers to the stabilization fund. State law allows town meeting to appropriate into, somebody lean on the switch, or?
Yeah, that was me.
Okay. Allows the town meeting to fund, allocate money into these two stabilization funds, one for the marina, one for the general stabilization fund. Any questions about that? For those of you who've been around for a while, you might remember that it used to take a supermajority to transfer funds into a stabilization fund. It no longer does, it just takes a majority vote. It takes a supermajority to take money out of the stabilization funds. So, it's a little bit easier to put in it than it is to take out. Article 27 is to transfer money into the cable receipts, to, I'm sorry, to transfer from the cable receipts fund to help fund our local cable access television programs. That's who's responsible for taping these meetings and putting those up on the web, and I think the town is working on expanding how many meetings are being taped and are being made available. Questions on that? The next series of articles have to deal with the Community Preservation Act. You'll notice when you look at your tax bill, there's, I believe it's a 3% surcharge on your property tax that funds the Community Preservation Fund under the Community Preservation Act, and those funds are, can be used only for certain kinds of things. They can be used for historic preservation, for recreation, I'm not going to remember them all, for housing.
Housing.
Housing in open space, thank you, thank you, Gary Sorkin. So, a couple of these are housekeeping articles. Some of that fund can be used for the administrative costs associated with administering the Community Preservation Fund. Some of it goes into various other funds that are held onto, and some of it is allocated out each year. This is money that you've already paid under your tax bills, so this does not have any effect on the tax rate, per se, and it's used to offset some of the expenses in those four areas that the town incurs. So, any questions on any of these Community Preservation Act? Anybody want a further explanation on these? Again, I think they're... Again, I think they're fairly straightforward. Yes, I'm sorry, Linda Schuster?
Can you, yeah. Yeah, sure. Twenty-eight? Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
Yeah, as in the proof.
Yes.
So you're asking, is the request, the quest here is for another position? A housing specialist? Can you remind a little bit more about that?
Yes, Gary, do you want to address that? Yes.
No, this is the short answer to the question.
Yeah.
This is for a consultant, effectively. You'll hear more at Town Meeting, but effectively, we're the only town in the Lower and Outer Cape that has neither a planner nor a housing specialist, and it has impacted our ability to develop housing. And this would be a consulting position, probably a year and a half or two years' worth of projects that would help to develop more affordable housing.
Yeah, so a contractor position, not a town employee. That answers your question. Other questions on these articles? Okay. Article 34 is to fund a preschool voucher program. This is something the town's talked about for a number of years. Again, this is a contingent article on, it would be contingent as well on, it only requires, it's not proposing borrowing, so it only requires a majority vote, but it'll also be contingent on the passage of Question Nine, which will be an override, so that would be a permanent change to the tax rate, above and beyond the limits of Prop. 2 and 1/2. Questions on this proposal? Questions or comments? The one information I have is the Social and Human Services Committee also recommends this. They met, I believe, a week and a half or so ago. The Social and Human Services Committee recommends it by a vote of five to zero. Yes, I'm sorry, I missed your name before?
I didn't give it to you the last time.
Okay.
You didn't miss anything. Catherine Latrano.
Thank you.
I just have a question about how currently, how many preschool children are in Wellfleet?
Do we know the answer to that? Does anybody know the answer to that?
Four-year-olds.
Preschool, preschool.
Preschool, preschool.
Four-year-olds, so three-year-olds.
Okay, well, Jen Plowey from the School Committee, can you answer that? Could you use a mic, please, Jen? Thank you.
Actually, Suzanne knows this better than I, and I guess she's not here because she administers it, but I think there are 19 four-year-olds right now, and about the same number of three-year-olds, yeah.
Stay there.
Okay.
I also have a question. It says not to exceed $7,000 per student to partially fund the, what is the per pupil cost of the preschool?
Well, the per pupil costs depend on the preschool.
Do you have an average?
We have several. As far as I know, you can send, well, you can do half a day, you can do every other day, you can, there's only one preschool that goes until 5:30 in the afternoon, and that's the one in Eastham. The others, $7,000 would probably get you four days a week from maybe nine to three at a preschool.
Okay, and one last question. How does that $7,000 compare to the per pupil cost of Wellfleet Elementary?
Oh, you've touched a subject near to my heart. Oh, my.
I happen to be a former school superintendent, so I understand your pain.
Oh, interesting, okay. Well, I have been advocating for public preschool at our school with all my heart and soul for a couple of years now, and unfortunately, I cannot get the majority of my school committee to agree. Part of it, I think, has to do with the fact that the preschools that are now working in Wellfleet are private. Therefore, people are making a living, or a partial living, out of running the preschools. And if we took the children into our public school, where I think would be far more effective, would be, to me, ideal for parents because they could leave their children all day if they wished, because we have an after-school program, which they could avail themselves of too. So it would be ideal for parents in Wellfleet. I don't think it would be as expensive totally after the first year, because certain equipment like cots and things like that would have to be bought for the children to rest in.
And if I could, maybe just, I think the question was, do you have a per pupil cost for the elementary school? Was that the question?
Let me just say, is it less than $7,000 or more than $7,000?
Per child, it would be more than $7,000, yes.
Okay. Let me just say one thing.
Sure.
One last thing to do with this meeting. Next time you want your school committee to talk about public preschool, call me.
Thank you, Ms. Latrano. Other questions on this Article 34? Excuse me. Apologize for my voice. Article 35 is to create a revolving fund for shellfish propagation. I think the summary that's given in the warrant is fairly self-explanatory. Are there questions? Questions on that? Helen, do you want to?
No.
No, okay.
Okay.
No questions? All right. Article 36 is to see if the town will vote to spend some money to, I think essentially this would be for consultancy work for wastewater, the municipal water system and the wastewater. It's not proposing to create a new position, which I think was before us last year, if I'm not correct. And again, this is going to be contingent, requires a majority vote, it will be contingent on Question 11, and once again, this is contingent on an override, not a debt exclusion. So that would be a, we're not proposing to borrow money on this, so that it would be funded through an override. Questions or comments on this? Somebody from the Water Commissioners, or Mr. Hart, or Helen?
I would answer some questions.
Are there questions on this? Linda?
Thank you very much. Has this been discussed with other towns to see if we can share a position or this kind of expertise with our partnering towns?
There are two separate sets of needs here, and they're practical. One comes, one set comes out of the fact that the state has required all municipalities to implement a kind of structure for addressing wastewater, non-point pollution. And that's important, and there is a set of practical needs for that. We have a wastewater planning committee, I'm abbreviating their title, that has about, when last I checked, $67,000, $69,000 left from $500,000 that was appropriated quite a few years ago. But they have practical needs going forward, and we're hoping that there's going to be a submission to the Department of Environmental Protection, so there's that. And then, the Water Commissioners also have a set of practical needs. And this article will appropriate money to be used, if necessary, to address some of those needs. That's my understanding of it, and my understanding is pretty good, in a direct way. In other words, if the Health Conservation Commission, or if the wastewater planning committee has a specific need to address in this next year, this money can be there for that, if you read the article. That's my best understanding of it.
Anything else?
Just a question for me, if you would. This money would go into the general fund and would then be expended under the direction of the Select Board, or?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so that if the wastewater committee, or if the Water Commissioners had a need to hire consultancy expertise, they would come to the Board of Select, the Select Board?
For example?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions on this? Yes, Mr. DeVastag?
I was just curious about the number two on the article. It says initiate implementation of the 208 wastewater plan upon granting the watershed permit by the Department of Environmental Protection. Does that mean that this permits the implementation of the plan? And as far as I know, no plan's been accepted. I mean, the language here seems to say that we're approving, initiating the implementation of the 208 wastewater plan. That's what the language says. I want to clarify that that's not what's happening.
Well, we can't approve that plan. Only the Department of Environmental Protection can approve it.
Right, it says upon granting of the watershed permit.
Yes, but once that watershed permit is granted, which again, only the DEP can do, and they're doing it kind of in collaboration with the Cape Cod Commission, this is, you know, being over, then, specific things should happen. Some of them are already happening and have been happening for a long time, but that's the implementation part of it. Maybe more money will be needed for that.
I guess what I'm saying is that this is, this article that we're voting on, is it initiating the implementation? We're voting to initiate the implementation of the plan. That's what it says here.
I know, but we have to initiate it.
You're saying it doesn't say that.
Which part? Are you looking at the summary or at the article?
No, the article. I think Mr. DeVastag was looking at number two, the two purposes of the article.
Number two in the article. Second purpose is to initiate the implementation of the 208 wastewater plan upon the granting of the watershed permit. The watershed permit can be granted before the plan is finished, if I'm asking the question.
No, the plan is an ongoing thing that will go, continue into the future.
Yes.
New tasks will be required to implement it.
Okay, but are we granting the authority to initiate the implementation by voting yes on this?
We have the authority. I'm going to let Justina Carlson, who was a Water Commissioner for a long time, help with this, but we have.
That's certainly not something I can answer, but.
Yeah, the town has the authority to implement it.
Helen, why don't you, let me see if somebody else can tease this out a little more easily.
I may defer to Kurt in a second, but it's not like if you didn't vote this, the plan wouldn't be implemented. We have statutory requirements to work on the 208 plan. So it's not like, it's not like voting for the consulting money is what initiates the plan. I hope that's a semantic thing that helps. I think you're getting a little tripped up on the words. The other thing is the watershed permit's kind of broad, and it needs to get implemented with the shellfish ward and so forth, and I'll turn it over to Kurt.
Yeah, basically, Mike, the answer to your question is, every town on the Cape is required to come up with a watershed plan, period. That's just a fact. That's our legal requirement. And the DEP and the Cape Cod Commission have established a framework of 42 different technologies that you can use. And so the Town of Wellfleet has been, has a framework that has been, is part of the 2014, you know, initial plan that's on the website. It's something that's been discussed for a long time. And in trying to move that forward, the next step is to basically get a watershed permit, which the town has to do. So the plan is just a basic framework for how you're going to achieve the water quality objectives that you have to achieve by law. It does not specifically mean that you're going to pursue any individual thing that's within that plan. You simply have to show a plan that meets the requirement, and DEP will approve, along with the Cape Cod Commission, that plan. Once you get an approved plan, then you can begin the process within the community of going about trying to implement different pieces of that. And it's clear that within the Town of Wellfleet or any other town, you may have something on that plan that's not going to be implemented for five, or 10, or 15, or even 20 years. For example, if we were going to build, you know, a satellite cluster system downtown in Wellfleet, that's part of the plan, but it probably wouldn't be for 10 or 15 years. You would work your way toward that. So it's a visionary plan. It's not, we're going to do this tomorrow. And there are other elements, I think, maybe the question revolves around some of the shellfish stuff that's in the plan. How that gets implemented is going to be an ongoing discussion with the shellfish community, with the constable, with administration. It's just another element. Another element would be, for example, removing the former railroad causeway in Duck Creek. Well, to do that, that requires a lot of work. It's theoretical at this point. The landowner may not be interested, et cetera. So the plan is simply something that DEP says, you have control over these things, this plan could meet your water quality objectives, we're going to certify that if you begin to implement some of those strategies, that you're in compliance with the law.
It's rather complicated, but does that basically answer your question? I think your question was, is this committing the town to any specific course of action?
And that's no.
It sounds like the answer is no.
The answer is no.
The answer is no.
Okay, but just to go one more step further. So any implementation of these steps, say, to put in a local wastewater, would all those have to come before Town Meeting, or does the Select Board have the authority to just go ahead and implement this plan?
No, everything that, anything that would be implemented would have its own separate track of requirements, including how you're going to pay for it.
Okay. So actual implementation would have to come to Town Meeting, and funds would have to be appropriated?
Yeah, I mean, the basic mechanism by which the legislative body of town, which is Town Meeting, has its say is by the power of the purse. The Selectmen can't really do anything about this without spending money. If they can do something that doesn't cost anything, they don't necessarily need to come back to Town Meeting, but if there's a cost involved, it's going to have to be approved by voters at Town Meeting.
Danny, yes, just to address that in detail about this article. So everything's happening right now. The DEP may grant the watershed permit within this year. We're unsure, right? And what we don't want is to have no money at all to address what we might want to address within the year. And again, I remind you, if we vote to appropriate money, that doesn't mean necessarily that it gets spent. And in this case, anything that happens within this year, there has to be a public meeting about it, the Select Board have to weigh it. We're actually a good working group. You see what I mean? So it's just for this year.
Mr. Curley?
Yes.
Dustin?
No, Ryan.
Ryan, sorry, my apologies.
I have a question, because you said that any appropriation would have to go before Town Meeting in regards to the 208 plan. From my reading of the County Commissioner's website, and the 208 plan's proposals that are on file there, that commercial propagation of shellfish would not, or has a zero cost associated with it, and thus would not be appropriation, and would not have to go before Town Meeting. Is that correct?
I don't know the answer to that.
Yes.
Okay.
There's a credit, there's a credit that when we harvest shellfish, it removes nitrogen. That's something that, within the plan, you get to take credit for. So it's just simply a no-cost to the town. The benefit of our incredible shellfish industry is that it has this mitigation of nitrogen impact, and that means you have to remove a lot less than you otherwise would have to remove.
Danny?
Go ahead.
You do understand that if something that may be appropriate in other communities happens, in other words, these reefs that have shellfish on them mitigating the nitrogen in the water, you understand, anywhere that happens has to go through the Conservation Commission. It can't just happen anywhere, and it certainly can't happen at will. And what Kurt just said about our natural habitat for shellfish and the amount of shellfish here, we may be doing better nitrogen mitigation-wise than a whole lot of other communities that might put in a number of these reefs. You see, we're already ahead of the game with this.
Does that answer your question? Yes, Kathleen Bacon?
This question is about hiring a consultant. You don't need to go into the conversation about shellfish mitigation. It matters time, please.
Okay, yeah, it's, well, it's not specifically for hiring a consultant, it's to have funds available for those two purposes. It doesn't necessarily say that they're going to hire a consultant to do it, but I think that's the general concept. Thank you for that. Other questions on this, on these two articles? This one article, I'm sorry. No? Okay. The Article 37 proposes to renovate, to raise an appropriate, or to borrow, rather, funding for the, I'm sorry, not for borrowing, to raise an appropriate funds to renovate the old shellfish shack. This, again, is a contingent article. It's contingent on an override vote under Question 10. Comments or questions on this? Comments or questions on this? Yes, Linda?
I have to apologize that I'm way behind in catching up on what's been discussed at meetings prior to this, so this may already be up on the website. Is there a plan for the use of this building that is informing the request for the renovations?
Ms. Horr.
So the current plan, which may change, but the current plan is to be using this as a workspace for the Shellfish Department. They don't have sufficient space in the building where they are, which they share with the beach ticker office. So the current plan is for the, this to be a workspace for the Shellfish Department.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Lewis. Sheila will bring your microphone.
It was my, it was my understanding, when this building was given to the town, it was given as a rest dressing room for the beach. And it seems that the town has just taken it over. The first thing they said was, well, it's inhabitable, so we can't use it for the, as a beach house.
Mm-hmm.
Now, all of a sudden, it's going to, the town is going to take it over and use it for a, a shellfish warden.
No, I'd say it's been used by the Shellfish Department for quite a few years.
It has, but before that, it was, it was given as a beach house.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I know that the Olive Mayo Beach was given to the town. I don't know the details of what, what was in that deed, how, whether it was deed restricted or not. Helen, do you know the answer to that?
Like it or not, having read the deed a number of times, a lot of times, that property is restricted for recreational use. And I have heard the Shellfish Constable, both our current Shellfish Constable and previously, it was used by the Shellfish Department, I feel, in error, because it was used as a department building. That isn't the case anymore. But a great proportion of the work that our Shellfish Department has to do is for the recreational fishery. And they can do it in that building. That's all I can say about that now. I wanted to answer the question about the deed.
Thank you, Helen. Other questions on this article? Excuse me. The next couple of articles, actually, I think it's only the one, is to propose a new bylaw that would essentially outlaw, as I read it, balloons in town. Questions or comments on this? I think it's fairly self-explanatory. There are no, no zoning bylaws. It's the first time in a while that we haven't had any zoning bylaws amendments. Disposition of town property, these all require two-thirds votes because you're transferring care and custody of town property to another department or for another purpose. So Article 39 is to give land to the Conservation Commission, or when I say give it, transfer care and custody to the Conservation Commission for open space. The, does anybody know specifically where this property is, real quickly? Yes, Dustin?
Ryan.
Oh, Ryan, I'm sorry, my apologies.
It is located behind, well, it's off of Parkinson Road, so it's behind the trailer park. There is, it's basically on Silver Creek.
Silver Spring, Silver Spring, yeah.
And there is one budding property that is private, and the other budding properties are all owned by the concert, by the Audubon Society. And the Audubon is, has blocked the town road with a gate and security cameras. And there is an additional private property that is serviced by that road further down that's kind of landlocked by the Audubon Society.
Thank you. Questions, questions on this proposal? Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ryan.
So this property, as it's written on the warrant, is misleading. The property itself is just a little bit over five and a half acres. Of that, 1.65 acres is upland. The warrant also says that is entirely within the ACEC. And the, but the 2005 assessor's maps show that it is, that portion of the property is not within the ACEC. Additionally, when this, when this went before the Board of Selectmen on January 15th, it was described to them as being entirely marshland. And now, the, and also that the road was a paper road, and thus would not be able to service the property. And the lot was described as unbuildable, and I'm wondering under what, or who made the determination that the lot was unbuildable with 1.65 acres of upland?
I don't know. Is someone who can answer that question? Yes.
I'll go up here.
Sorry, I'm blanking on your name.
My name is Bruce Herter, and I'm the chairman of the Open Space Committee. And just to address a few of the, the issues here. One is that it, the land is exactly where you said it is. It is within the ACEC. We did not say that it's all lowlands. It's 1.5 is, 1.6 and.
...the Board of Selectmen on January 15th.
I don't know who, you know, from the Open Space Committee, to speak for myself, we did not say that that's the case, and that's not what the article says here, and that's not what we're going to present. The reason that we're strongly advocating that this land be, be put into conservation is because it butts Hatches Creek. It is mostly lowlands. It is, again, ACA is an area of critical environmental concern, and we believe that the, the land is really land that should be protected. Right now, it's not buildable because there's no access to it.
The road provides access.
No.
I don't want to get into too much of a debate here, if we can.
But the road doesn't. It's a private road, and you're not allowed in the road. You can't get in that road to build on it.
So.
Okay.
You okay? So I just wanted to make a comment that there is a week before town meeting, and everybody lives in the town, and you can all maybe ask each other a question if you wanted to get ahold of Bruce, or just get more clarification. There are people available that we can reach out to in the, in the off time, if we kind of take that time here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I, I mean, I, I hope we tried to answer your question again. Maybe you can talk to one another after the meeting. Okay, Article 41 proposes to transfer care and custody of land to the housing authority. I believe this land is, is this the property that's off of Summit Avenue? Is that correct? Right, I think there'll be a slide at town meeting that shows, shows where this property is. Questions or comments? Yeah, David, David Agger?
Skip the word.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped 40? Yes, I did, you're right. 40 is on, property on Lieutenant Island. Questions on that? Okay. Okay, thank you. So Article 41 is the property that's proposed to be given to the housing authority, just off of Summit Avenue. And questions on that? Okay. The, the next article is proposing a long-term lease of the property near the elementary school. The summary of this article explains, explains this fairly well. Questions on, on this article? Questions or comments?
Okay.
Okay. And again, this is, because it's authorizing the selectmen to, to enter into a long-term lease, it's transferring control and letting them negotiate a long-term lease for, for housing, and that will require two-thirds vote. The next article, 43, is a petitioned article. I know the petitioner is here. Would you like to say anything about this, Mr. Katsounas?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is John Katsounas, and I'm the sponsor of this petitioned article. And the intent and purpose of this article basically is to, if approved at town meeting, to give the people of Wellfleet a chance to vote their personal views. It's democracy in action, and no matter what your views are, if it's placed, if it's approved at town meeting, it gives our residents a voice in our local affairs. Thank you.
Okay, just by way of information, I had a discussion with this, with Mr. Katsounas, and I believe that the motion that's going to be made will change the wording slightly so that it will say not to direct the Board of Selectmen, but to some wording to the effect of to request, recommend.
That is correct.
Or something, because as you may or may not know, the, the town meeting cannot direct the Board of Selectmen to take any specific action. They, the town meeting can ask the Board of Selectmen to, to place this on the next ballot. Town meeting can recommend that they place it on the next ballot. They can't direct them to do that. And I've discussed with Mr. Katsounas, and I believe that the motion will be made to reflect that, that limitation. That's a, it's an important separation of powers that the, the selectmen can't spend money that we don't let them spend as town meeting. By the same token, town meeting can't require that the Board of Selectmen do anything. That's just the, the way the two-part town government works. So, thank you. Yes, sir?
Is it semantics? Why the selectmen voted unanimously, unanimously not to approve?
Well, I don't know if it was because of that, because of the way it's worded now. I, I don't know if the Board of Select, the selectboard wants to speak to that.
I'm just curious, for most of these articles, you know, it's unanimous approval or recommendation. And this one, the first one I see, it's unanimous not to recommend it.
I can't speak for the Board of, the Select Board. Is there anybody, Janet, would you like to?
So in March, when we were making our recommendations, no one had come forward to explain what they wanted. I think the article might have been worded differently, too, and it did say direct the board, and there was something else. So I would still ask the gentleman to, to explain what, what his, what his view of the process is for mitigating, what, what it would take, and what, what exactly you want done. I mean, mitigate is, just means to change.
Well, I'm leaving that up to the voters of Wellfleet to decide their own views. That's the whole point of the article. If approved, to get the question on the next scheduled election ballot, so the town people of Wellfleet can vote their conscience. That's the whole point of this article, if approved at town meeting.
Okay.
Pretty ambiguous, but.
Helen?
Sorry, can, speaking as one person on the Select Board, various members of the Select Board have been getting information over the last couple of years about the seal population at the harbor manage, you know, the harbor conference and special meetings about this, and we've gotten quite a lot of signs on it, under our belts. And I, only speaking for myself, voted not to recommend this because I don't believe that there's any way to mitigate the seal population in an effective way. I think that nature needs to take its course here, and we need to learn how to live with nature. That's my opinion.
Okay, I, again, I don't think, I don't think we're going to be able to get into a lengthy debate about whether or not, whether or not we can mitigate the seal population, what specifically we should do. I think this specific, I think what this article is, is asking for is a ballot question at some point in a future election to, to gauge the sense of what the town, town, what the feeling of the town is about this issue.
That is correct, Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not proposing any specific course of action, as I understand it. And again, there's, there is a process, I discussed with Mr. Katsounas, there is a process by which citizens can place a ballot question. If the selectmen choose not to place it, or if this article is defeated, there is a process by which, it's similar to the state, how, how an initiative petition gets on a, on a state ballot, there's a, there's a process by which a proposal can get on a local ballot. It requires a certain number of signatures, it requires going before the Board of Selectmen, if the Board of, the Select Board, rather, if the Select Board chooses not to place it, then there's a higher threshold of 10%, but 10% of the voters, excuse me, can secure a ballot question. But in all cases, it, it still becomes only an advisory question. Again, a, a ballot question that arises by a citizen initiative on a local ballot can only be an advisory question. Yes, Kathleen?
I voted not to recommend this because there's a lot we can't control with regard to climate change that's causing our, our marine life, you know, to be exasperated in this way. So it's, it's just not something that's within our scope or our power to, to mitigate without recognizing, you know, the climate change factor in this.
Once again, I, I ask the people of Wellfleet to vote to put this on the next election, scheduled election ballot, and have your voices heard. It's just a question to vote on. Your politics do not matter here. It's just giving you a voice. Whichever way you go, that's why I'm here, to give you people a choice, to give all of us a choice. That's town government. That's the way it was intended by our forefathers, our founding fathers. And this is the reason why I initiated the process, for all of us to have a voice. Whether or not you agree with what the wordage and the verbiage is, it's completely up to you. You get to vote at the ballot box, your conscience, and the outcome will benefit all of us. At least the democracy part of it will happen, and that's the whole point here. Everybody has an opinion, and I think our voters should exercise their opinions. It's just an issue, and the intent is to put it on the question ballot. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Katsounas.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions on this specifically? Okay, Lydia, Valente? Excuse me.
Hi, yes, thank you. You are asking for the town to petition the federal government and the Massachusetts government in this article now?
Once again, I am asking for the voters of Wellfleet to decide their course of action going forward. This is a question that if it's put on the ballot, if it's decided at town meeting, the townspeople will get to vote. That's all I'm here for, to tell you, as far as information.
I guess what I would rather see, myself, is your petition, what you want to say to the federal government and the state of Massachusetts.
I, once again, I refer to our voters here. That's what I'm trying to do, is put it on the ballot, so everyone can decide for themselves. The language is there, you can read it, and everyone can decide at the ballot box.
Danny?
Yeah, I don't see what we're deciding.
Okay, thank you, Lydia. Danny? Yes, Danny?
How do you reconcile this with the Marine Mammals Act?
I, I'm not reconciling anything. It is, it is an issue, and I think the voters of our town can decide for themselves.
Again, I, I, I think what Mr. Katsounas is trying to achieve is to give the voters a, a chance to express their sentiment. Whether or not it actually has any effect is, is perhaps doubtful, but I, I think, I think his intent in bringing this forward is to, to put this to a ballot question so that they, in some non-binding fashion, the voters can, can have their say. Yes, sir?
Just a, a quick question, getting back to how it's written here. Are you asking for more help? It seems that you're asking for the state, or you're asking Wellfleet to ask the state for help, or the federal government for help, and, and that's all I'm asking.
Thank you. If, if it's approved, if it gets to the election ballot and it's approved, then at least our officials will have a voice behind them. They'll have the town behind them. And I am just here to facilitate that process. We all need to vote, and we all need to have our voices heard, for that matter. And I think that's very important for all of us, whether you agree one way or another, or you haven't made up your mind yet. It's something that we all need to think about, and I would appreciate all of you to think about it strongly. Thank you.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to move on if, if we can. Steve, did you have something else? Okay. Okay, the, okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Katsounas. The Article 44 is another petitioned article, the, dealing with the bike trail, the bike trail extension. Yes, Steve, Steve Oliver?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. My name's Steve Oliver. By the way, I'm not a, an abutter to this project. The Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, known as DCR... The Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, known as DCR, is planning to extend the bike trail across the Cahuahola Road, down the Old Railroad Bed, and connect it directly to Route 6 across from the Ghost Bike. It will also build a 33-car parking lot at this point across from the Ghost Bike, not only funneling bikers, pedestrians, and motorists to the most congested and accident-prone section of Route 6 in Wellfleet, but encouraging them to do so.
Okay, Steve, again, we're, we're not really here to debate tonight, so if you, if you have something specific that you'd like to bring up or answer questions about this, rather than speaking to the merits of it, please.
Yeah, all right, so basically, what we want to do is to, to just stop the extension at Old County Road, so that we have a chance to see if there's an alternative route we can take, which would be a much safer route. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Thank you. Questions, questions from Mr. Oliver?
Steve, I think Rebecca's here too, or was, just two, two comments.
Yep.
About five or six years ago, the Bike and Walkways Committee was, were discussing bike lanes, not trails, but bike lanes, and the people of Old County Road and Cahuahola Road complained, so I think wherever we do it, there's going to be some complaints, but the thing, the DOT is going to come back and talk to us too, so, and there are, we, we, okay, we have heard from a lot of people in town, and we will be discussing it more with the DOT, you know, taking into account what everybody has said, so I don't know how this'll, I know we didn't recommend it because we didn't have any good information, exactly what you wanted to do, but whether it passes or not, the DOT will be coming back.
Okay, Stephen, I don't mean to cut you short tonight, but again, you'll have the opportunity at town meeting to make that argument, make your argument, okay.
Any other questions on this?
Questions on this?
Okay.
Very good. Article 45 is another petitioned article to change the charge of the Energy Committee, and speaking with Dick Elkin, I believe this may be indefinitely postponed because I think the Board of Selectmen have agreed informally to, to make the changes that the, am I correct on that, or, yes, the Board of Selectmen has, Select Board, rather, has agreed to make the changes to the charge that the Energy Committee is looking for, so I believe that that's going to be indefinitely postponed, or suggested for indefinite postponement. Article 46 is a petitioned article to propose a new Select Board policy, municipal policy for reducing the uses of plastic bottles. Questions or comments on this? And again, there, I believe there are going to be some slight changes when the motion is made under this article, the motion is going to exclude emergency, emergency, emergency services, town departments engaged in, in emergency, emergency services, so that's a little bit different than what you see here. And questions, questions or comments on that? Yes, Helen?
So, this was a question that I asked in our Select Board meeting, you know, the Select would have a very structured way to create our policies, which everybody's supposed to know and pay attention to, maybe not so much always, but it's a special set of obligations for the town. This was mysterious to me, and if any of the petitioners are here, maybe they could address it. Where exactly do you want this policy to exist? Do you want it to be an environmental bylaw, in which case it should go to the Conservation Commission? Do you want it to be a Select Board policy, in which case we don't need town meeting for that? So, is there somebody here who can address it, who petitioned it?
Lydia, Lydia Valente? Well, again, I think, I think what, again, this is not directing the Board of Select, the Select Board, but it's recommending that the Select Board adopt this as a policy, so I'll let Lydia speak to that.
Right.
Yes, it, yes, it does, it says to recommend the adoption of a municipal plastic bottle reduction, that, that is what it says.
It doesn't say Select Board policy, which is a different...
Okay, I'm sorry, you're correct, okay.
Well, it is a petition, in our petition it was to ask the Select Board to adopt it as a policy, that was the language in the petition.
Well, perhaps that can be addressed in the motion, say?
Sure, and the reason we wanted to bring it to town meeting was really to get community input and community support, to kind of advertise that Wellfleet's doing this, and we feel there's momentum, and that there's demand for it now, you know, to stem the tide of plastic pollution in general.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and perhaps, if we, if we haven't already, perhaps we can, you can get with me, craft a motion that'll, that'll accomplish what you want to do, if, I don't, has a motion for that already been written, Dan, or?
Not in stone.
Okay.
Not in stone.
Okay, very good. As long, as long as you can come up with a motion that accomplishes what you want to do and falls within the scope, I think we can maybe, maybe answer some of Helen's questions. And that brings us, the, the last few articles are usually handles as a consent calendar, they're standard articles that we vote on every year, usually non-controversial. Disposal of per, town, town property, which it looks like there's none, I don't know if there's any between now and town meeting will come up, no. It's Article 48 authorizes the town collector to collect our taxes. Article 49, we assume liability for damage that the DEP might do for work in town, and Article 50 is something that we, we allocate the town's contribution to the Nauset Regional School Commission according to an agreement that we have with the other three towns in the district, and, rather than under the state formula, and I will tell you that this is very much to the town's advantage to use the formula that we've negotiated with the other three towns, rather than to accept the, the state formula. If you look at, follow in the papers what's going on between Chatham and Harwich right now, or between Dennis and Yarmouth, you'll see why we're really in very good shape, and the relationship that we have with our three other neighbor towns in the district is, is excellent, so. That's it, we finished at one minute to nine, I think we did very well.
So, predictions on how many nights?
Yeah, just, again, one other, one other thing which I meant to say at the beginning, I would hope that we can conclude this town meeting in two nights, I can't promise that that's going to be the case. I want to make sure that there's fair opportunity, we have a couple of fairly complex and controversial articles before us, and I'm not going to shortchange anyone, I will ask people to be to the point, to be as succinct as possible, and try not to be repetitive, but, so if we need to go to three nights to give everyone a fair chance, we will, but the earlier you come, the earlier we get a quorum, if you could pass that word out so that we can try to start right on time at seven. Thank you all for coming tonight, thank you to the forum for sponsoring this, this meeting. Have a good night.[1790.52][1790.52][applause]